States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Go ahead with Roll Call.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Here.
Mr. Porter?
Here.
Mrs. Rose?
Here.
Mrs. Smith? Mrs. Love?
Let it be noted that Mr. Beistel, Mrs. Love, and Mrs. Smith did indicate that they would not be present tonight.
All six were present. Okay. Do we have any citizens' comments?
I have none.
Okay. Moving on. Not into the computer yet. Okay. We'll go with superintendent's information.
Yes, under superintendent information, I put several things there. There's a program that our faculty can take advantage of. It's called the Sage Program through their financial advisor where they can get credit towards their child's education. It doesn't cost the district anything. I included three pieces of information for you to look at. And I also, Mrs. Rose and I were very privileged this morning. We have something called Rachel's Closet here in the middle school, and I included two pictures for your viewing. And I do believe Mrs. Rose had something she wanted to add to that.
Yes, I do. Back in December, it was through a grant, thanks to Mr. Clara and the urging of our SAP team, the district was able to bring a program called Rachel's Challenge to the middle school. I reported about this very powerful presentation. To review, the program is about a student, Rachel Joyce Scott, who was one of the first students that was shot and killed at the Columbine High School massacre. After her passing, her family found out about the many random acts of kindness she had done. As Mr. Mash mentioned, this morning I had the privilege of meeting with our SAP team to get an update on how Rachel's Challenge is progressing here at the middle school. And SAP means Student Assistant Program. So there's been a four-club established, and that's Friends of Rachel, a group of students dedicated to making a positive impact. So far, it's been very successful. A few of the things being done is a welcome bag that's given to new students. Another thing is sitting with a student who is sitting alone at lunch. And another day without hate is being planned. Also in the works, and this is really amazing to me, we now have Rachel's Closet here at the middle school. The SAP team found an old storage room, cleaned it out, and set up Rachel's Closet. Currently, clothes are being donated for the 6th, 7th, and 8th grade students that are in need. The four-club and special needs students are involved in the process. The SAP team has also reached out to Mrs. Liz Goodman and the art students at the high school to paint a mural and some of Rachel's sayings on the walls of the closet. And none of this would be possible without the collaborative effort of the alumni and staff. And I especially want to publicly thank and acknowledge the SAP team for their hard work and dedication. And the members are Heather Myers, Jenny Teraski, Nicole Pufnik, Kathy Palagas, Pam Wardman, Barb Kahn, Tracy Kuhar Long, and Ruth Joyce. And if I missed anybody, I apologize, but it's something that I'm very proud of. And Rachel's chain reaction is continuing here at the middle school, and soon it'll be throughout the district. So I just wanted to give a shout-out about that. That's all I have on that right now.
And that's all I have from my report.
Okay. Very good. Okay. Solicitors' information?
I apologize for taking up public time to deal with this, but it seems like it's the only way to deal with it. We've had an ongoing series of right-to-know requests, taking up a large amount of time and effort on the part of administrators, Mrs. Tarzan, and myself, with requests from Simon Campbell. More recently, Mr. Campbell has sent out an informal survey requesting that it be completed on his special survey form. Some of the information in there is, you know, obviously, public, and I have no problem with it being supplied to him. He's also asking for the individual names of the school board members and the superintendent, which is fine. Insofar as the school board members, he's also desirous of obtaining your email addresses. Those addresses are not necessarily subject to the right-to-know law insofar as being available to the general public, as distinct from being available for the internal business of the school district. Some of these may have been actually given to him in a prior request several years ago. There has been, there have been some court cases which I think could give you a reason for refusing to supply them. I don't think this is something to vote on. I think each of you can make an individual decision, and I'm asking you to do that so we know, so that Mrs. Tarzan and I know what to do. So I've given each of you a page, and for the purposes of this little exercise, just all consider yourself to be Board Member Number Five. I'd ask you to list your name. If you are okay with listing your email address, whether it's the school or private, put it down, and we'll give it to you. If you don't want to do it, I'd ask you to indicate you do not wish to disclose it. We'll then gather all this material. I can complete the rest of the questions where he wants to know the classification of the school district, where a third-class, consider a third-class school district, and some other questions like that. The, I guess, why do it, why don't do it? If you do it, he might leave us alive, but there's no guarantee of that. If you do it, you may be subjecting yourselves to individual lobbying efforts by him for his particular agenda or agendas. You may be in favor of those, you may be opposed to them. That's up to you. I'm just trying to find a way to deal with this in a transparent way in which you get to make the decision rather than Mrs. Tarzan and I trying to guess as to what you would want to do. So I'd ask you, before you leave tonight, to complete them and return them. Since you're the vice president, yours is ever so slightly different, and Mrs. Love's is a little bit different because you're designated as such. He has indicated in his most recent email that about 250 school districts out of 500 have given him the survey. However, there's some problems with it. It apparently can't be completed if one of the names are left blank because you have a vacancy. And I'm not sure if he's going to believe us if some of you don't have access to email at home, which I know to be the case, but which is fine because we're in southwestern Pennsylvania and not everybody has email. And he's from the eastern suburban area and is not familiar with circumstances all over the state. And I wish it'd take some time to lobby for broadening for all rural areas, but that's just a snide comment on my part. Thank you. If anybody asks any question, I'll try to answer it.
Ruffstall Level Mentry? Old business?
Okay. Mr. Mash asked me to read the resolution since I'm a little bit more familiar with all the details. Resolution to approve purchase of portion in unnamed street in Village of Ruffstall. He resolved that. A, the solicitor is authorized to prepare and the president to execute and secretary to attest an agreement of sale for the purchase of the real estate described below. My Southmoreland School District, here and after Southmoreland, from Kenneth L. Colbert and Linda S. Colbert, husband and wife, here and after Sellers One, and Dennis H. Taylor, Sr., here and after Seller Two, and for the following terms. Number one, all of their interest in the unnamed 30-foot street of the unrecorded Samuel Boyer Plan of lots in the Village of Ruffstall, East Tunington Township, Westmoreland County, for the area which adjoins two sides of Lot One, from the boundary of Lot One to the boundary of Southmoreland School District, for the length of the easterly boundary of Southmoreland School District property as far as it adjoins the same as described as Track Third in DBV 2282, page 535, and the northern terminus of the intersection in Track Third with Track Second, and the unnamed street and the portion of the street as it projects into State Route 31, as per drawing of Law Highland Survey, and that drawing is now included in your board docs. Under and subject to rights of ingress, egress, and regress, if any, of other owners of lots in the unrecorded plan of lots of Samuel Boyer. And what that means is, the school district is not saying that it is intending to block if anyone intended to, wanted to use that portion in order to get to the rest of the unnamed street. We're not taking a position on that. That's too, up to those folks to deal with. Number two, the sales price is $100 for Seller One and $100 for Seller Two. The Southmoreland paying all closing costs for deed preparation, $140 each, settlement fee of $200, recording fee of about $149.25 per deed, depends on the number of UPI numbers required by Westmoreland County Tax Mapping. No brief fees of $10 per deed, title search and insurance of not to exceed $3,226.20, and costs and fees for preparation of and obtaining subdivision approval, if required by East Tunington Township, about $150, and recording thereof about $69, for subdivision of Sellers One and Seller Two, interest in that portion of the unnamed 30-foot street described above. Title search and insurance will all include the above purchase and the existing Southmoreland School District property in Ruffstall for their full market value from lawyers abstract company, Westmoreland County, Inc. The Board has received a disclosure letter from the solicitor concerning LACWSC and authorizes and directs the president to sign the consent there, too. The solicitor is eligible to receive a portion of the above LACWSC bill for his work from LACWSC from the above total, which he will deduct from his hourly bill for the month of closing if it occurs. So it'll be offset against the bill, so it just neutrals out. Deed shall be by deed of special warranty. This of inserted, closing to be honored before March 30, 2019. Business manager authorized to review and execute the settlement sheet and the red call notice on the deeds. Friends for the above shall be transferred from account Budgetary Reserve Number...
Okay, the Budgetary Reserve Number is 10-5900-800. And I'm not going to read all the redundant zeros that follow after the accounting stream. And you're going to be transferring money to account number 10-4100-710-300-230, and the rest of the accounting string is all zeros.
Mr. Monal ran a tape, and his numbers are $4,443.70. There's a chance it could be ever so slightly underneath that. If I could only have to record one deed, but just to make sure we've covered everything, we're suggesting not to exceed $5,000, just to make sure if we run into a bunch of extra UPI numbers or something like that. The treasurer's authorized to expend funds as set forth above upon presentation of the documentation by the solicitor, evidence of the need therefore. Resolution passed on December 13, 2018, titled in the minutes as "Quot Qua Portion of Street at Ruffstall Building Is Vacated and Replaced With This Resolution." E, if subdivision approval is required, the sales are contingent on approval by the township of the subdivision. So E is not in your board docs, it's being added here orally. I'd just like to say that the Colberts and Mr. Taylor, they're essentially getting involved in all this for $100 each, and it's, I'd like to actually thank them for being so cooperative. So I'm asking the president to ask for a motion.
All right. Do we have a motion?
I'd like a motion.
By Mr. Paul Cott. Be second.
Second.
By Mr. Porter. Roll, any discussion?
We'll put the closing date to be on our business board.
Closing date?
March 30, 2019.
No discussion, then we'll go ahead and have roll call.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Motion carries, six, three, absent.
All right, moving on to new business, 2019, 2020, 2020 school calendar revision.
The Board is going to be asked to adopt the revised calendar. I apologize. Somehow or another, there were seven sets of eyes that looked at the calendar, and Columbus Day was listed wrong on the calendar day. So all it involves is transferring Columbus Day in a subsequent Act 80 day one week later.
I mean, when you're going to do it, you're going to...
Okay. Any discussion on that? I'm seeing none. Go ahead and have roll call.
I'm sorry. Who made the motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. I guess I do have to call for a motion. No motion on that, please?
Sir.
Mr. Fry?
Sir.
And Mr. Porter. Now we can have roll call.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Motion carries, six, three, absent.
Act One Preliminary Budget.
Resolved by the Board of School Directors of Southmoreland School District as follows. The school board approves advertising the proposed preliminary budget for the 2019-2020 fiscal year with expenditures of...
$32,398,092, and revenues of the same, $32,398,092, and zero use of the fund balance.
For displaying advertising and further actions described herein. Number one, the school district shall make the proposed preliminary budget available for public inspection at least 20 days before the date scheduled for adoption of the preliminary budget, which is scheduled for February 14, 2019. Number two, at least 10 days before the date scheduled for adoption of the preliminary budget, the secretary shall advertise a preliminary budget notice in substantially the form as presented to the school board herewith that is incorporated and made a part of this resolution by the reference. The notice shall be advertised once in a newspaper of general circulation and shall be posted conspicuously at the school district's offices. Number three, the Act One index applicable to the school district as calculated by the Pennsylvania Department of Education is 3.1 percent. The preliminary budget proposal assumes that the school district will receive approval for the use of one or more Act One Real Estate Tax Referendum Exceptions. The school district shall take all steps required to obtain approval for the referendum exceptions contemplated in the preliminary budget proposal, including advertising once in a newspaper of general circulation and placing on the school district internet website Act One Referendum Exception Notice in substantially the form as presented to the school board.
Roll call for, and then we'll call for a discussion?
Yeah.
Do you want me to read the notice?
Yeah, do you want to?
The notice is as follows: Southmoreland School District Preliminary Budget Notice and Special Meeting Notice and Act One Referendum Exception Notice. Notice is given that the proposed preliminary budget for the General Fund of Southmoreland School District for the 2019-2020 fiscal year is available for public inspection at the school district business offices at 100 Scotty Way, Scottsdale, Pennsylvania, and will be presented for adoption as a preliminary budget proposal at a school board meeting to be held in the cafeteria of the middle school, 200 Scotty Way, Scottsdale, Pennsylvania, beginning at 7:00 PM on February 14, 2019. The preliminary budget proposal may be amended before adoption. This will be a special meeting held for consideration of the preliminary budget proposal, and other general businesses may come before the school board. Pursuant to Act of June 27, 2006, pamphlet Law 1873, Number One, as amended by Act of June 30, 2011, pamphlet Law 148, Number 25, Section One at SEC, known as Act One, the Pennsylvania Department of Education publishes an index percentage applicable to the school district. The school district real estate tax increase for the next fiscal year is limited to the index of 3.1 percent unless the proposed tax rate is approved by voters pursuant to the referendum where the school district qualifies for an Act One exception. As a result of special circumstances covered by an Act One referendum exception, a tax rate percentage increase above the index might be required to balance the school district budget for the next fiscal year. The tax to be levied is required to provide a quality education program as reflected in the school district preliminary budget. The school district intends to seek approval from the Pennsylvania Department of Education as required by Act One for an exception, allowing increase of the real estate tax as reflected in the school district preliminary budget. On written request by any school district resident or taxpayer, the school district will provide a copy of the referendum exception application. Notice is also hereby given that persons 18 years of age or over who become residents or inhabitants of this school district are required by law, within 12 months thereafter, to notify Southmoreland School District Business Manager, 100 Scotty Way, Scottsdale, Pennsylvania, 15683, of their having become residents or inhabitants or their attainment of age. This notice is given in connection with the occupation tax, now known as the local services tax levied by Southmoreland School District, and any person failing to comply with the requirements of this notice will be liable, in addition to the tax, for penalty equal to the tax. Might explain that that tax is $5.
So, so I get these dates correct? Because I've never been through an Act One before.
We haven't either.
All right. We're going to do an Act One tonight. I know with Act One preliminary budgets, there's strict time restrictions, but I've never been through it before, and I never started it. So we have an opt-out period till when?
Tonight, or at a special meeting January 31?
To opt out. In other words, if we don't do it by January 31, we'll be on the full Act One. Is that correct? Is that what you're telling me?
You have to either have opted out or affirmatively passed a proposed preliminary budget. You need to pass the proposed... When I say "passed," you're approving the posting of it. You have to vote again in February. The timeline is such that if you act tonight, then you are maintaining your timeline for your February 14 meeting, at which or before which, you could still make further adjustments. Okay? If you decide, if you don't want to do that and you want to opt out, you either have to opt out tonight or call for a special meeting honored before January 31.
To opt out.
If you go to January 31 and then decide you don't want to opt out and you really do want to do this, then the only possible other meeting night is February 20, which is the final night to do a proposed preliminary budget, and you'd have to do it.
You have to do...
You would have to do it by that point because if you, if you don't...
You have to do what?
A proposed preliminary budget approval.
Under Act One?
Yes. Now, the mere fact that you approve this tonight and subsequently approve this or something less than this on February 14 so far, if you maintain that time schedule, does not mean that you can't reduce it from now through, I would recommend, March and April, and then ultimately for your proposed final budget at the end of May. And you've already set the date for your proposed final budget and your final budget, which will be June 27. That part isn't really necessary for tonight. But the point for tonight is, if you want to maintain the schedule that has been worked on all fall and in December, unfortunately, you were not here then, but you would need to approve the posting of this tonight.
Okay. Again, I never took a district through an Act One. Never started, never had to. This question's for you, June. The exceptions are typically for special ed and retirement. When you ask for an exception, is it from one year to the next? Isn't it the increase from the last fiscal year to this proposed budget?
It's the year before that for special ed.
What?
Special ed's different than the other ones.
I have the referendum exception playbook. So to partially answer your question, the exceptions are less than they were in 2006 when they passed the Act. There was eight original exceptions. Now they're down to an exception for school construction, which generally what that means is you can get an exception for grandfathered debt.
Yeah, well, that doesn't even apply to us.
I don't think it would either.
Ours is retirement, so how's it...
Then there's an exception for retirement and an exception for special education expenses.
Right.
Now for retirement, now mind you, the, you have to go through this Act One budget process according to these timelines, and then at some point in March, the Department of Education, let's see, March 7 is the deadline for the Department of Education to notify school districts that submitted an Act One preliminary budget, whether the proposed tax rates are equal to or less than the index. Well, obviously, they would be more than the index, in which case the department then has to give you approval, and it's usually a perfunctory thing, they give you approval, they open up what's called the referendum exception system, which is a, which is a separate system for data entry. And you can only get, you can only get entrance to it once they give you that special key. And then you have to complete their special spreadsheets. Some of it is pre-populated with information from our, you know, all districts recently completed annual financial reports. You fill in what's rest. The form calculates the dollar amount of additional tax revenue you can raise. Then the department will then notify you, yes, you qualify for these exceptions or or not, or some, some reduced amount. So there is a strict timeline and a... So, there is a strict timeline and it drags on into, to March. I've worked, worked on the unofficial spreadsheets that were available from last season, and I had to pre-populate the numbers that, that were needed. For example, retirement, they use as their base, retirement salary base of the 2011-2012 school year, and then there's a reduction for the, that part of the salary base that is for federal salaries. So, that goes back to our 11-12 information.
Is that the base year then for retirement?
That's the base year.
Up till 1920? So, you've got all those years you can make up?
No, you can't make them up. These exceptions can be taken or not, but you can't make them up. So, we didn't seek Act One budgets in the past, so we didn't seek any of these exceptions for each budget year. They're, they're separate and distinct, just like the Act One tax index. They're not cumulative. You know, if you, if there's a year, like 2017, where you didn't raise taxes to the index, you, no tax increase, well, that index amount is gone. So, each and every year of the index is gone, you only get to use one index, and that's the index that pertains to the upcoming year, which is now 3.1%.
I agree with that.
So, our little amount for retirement, this is, again, this is unofficial, not official, this is using the, this spreadsheet was there in my interpretation of what numbers go in there. Again, most of it will be, be pre-populated from the state, but the additional tax dollars that can be raised over the Act One index, according to this, was $31,476.
Right, we're too late. We waited too long.
And there's a, there's a similar worksheet for special education.
And what's that one?
Now, as, as I worked through it, the allowable exception increase came out to be $141,215. So, you add the two together, you've got approximately 170, you know, three, 172-plus thousand dollars. Again, give or take whatever these forms will turn out to be once the referendum exception system is open for us to, to use.
So, off the top of my head, if the index is at 3.1, we're at 78 mills, we're allowed to go up two, two and a quarter mills, and now another 170,000 for the two exceptions, that's about another mill and a half. So, we're at three point, three, three and three-quarter mills we're allowed to go. Is that correct?
Our index is 3.1 with the adjustment.
Okay, so I'm looking at PDE 2020...
Well, here's where we're at now.
I'm looking at what you calculated for the new millage rate.
Well, that, that millage rate, the maximum we could go under Act One is shown on page So, if you turn to page six, and the page numbers that the form gives you are on the bottom. So, the maximum we could go under Act One, you'll see it says index maxims, line P, P as in Paul, maximum mills based on index. So, for Fayette County, the, the maximum would be 14.9068, and for the Westmoreland properties, it would be 80.2163. That's the max under Act One. On the previous page, page five, you would see under all that data, 2018-19 data, you see line B as in boy real estate mills, it shows our current millage rates for Fayette, So, for, for Westmoreland County, the maximum you could go under Act One is an additional 2.43 mills, and for Fayette County, an additional 0.4482 mills. That's if you choose to opt out and stay within the index, and you have that choice tonight or have another meeting next week, if you wanted to opt out.
So, how much money will this bring in, Jim?
Well, about 220,000.
No, this is the maximum, right? This is the...
That's the maximum under Act One.
But that's not what this shows. This shows the maximum with a referendum that balances the budget.
And how much is that?
He's going to tell you.
Well, it, it, this, please, please note that this Act One budget is largely a theoretical exercise, and it's also a beginning draft budget for the district to use. You know, we, we were asked to prepare a draft budget much earlier than we have in the past, and we have done that. What will be coming then for all consumption are all those detailed pages for you to dig into, you know, where's the beef? You'll, you'll get the beef, all the detailed pages, summarized sheets, and we can really dig into it. This Act One budget gets you on that timeline, because remember, we're, we're on a track and you have a choice. You can go Act One track, or you can go down the traditional budget track, which is what we have been doing each and every year under Act One. We've opted out and gone down the regular traditional budget track. We've opted out, you know, we've sworn to stay within that Act One index, and we have, and then you go down the track where your next points, official points are, you have to adopt a proposed final budget in May and then your final budget in June. Now, under Act One, if you feel you want the flexibility to possibly raise more mills than what the Act One index allows, you go down the Act One track, and you send into PDE this theoretical budget, and I'll explain something on page five in a second here. You get down that track and you say, okay, we need more money than Act One will garner based on this first draft. Now, this first draft is like a lot of first budget drafts, it's packed with stuff that is right for your decision-making, to keep in or take out. That's fine. You're in that Act One budget track, you're telling PDE, we need more revenues than Act One will, will allow us. Here's our Act One budget. They take it, they will scrutinize it, they will contact the district, you're approved or you're not approved, whatever, they'll, they'll review these budgets, but by and large, they say, okay, you need more than you're allowed under Act One, so you want to go down the Act One track, and we're going to open up in March that referendum exception system for you to go in there and fill out those spreadsheets to see how much more you can garner in extra tax dollars. It will calculate that, and we'll know, like, okay, we need X amount of dollars, Act One gives us this, referendum exceptions give us this, we're way up here. So, then you, you add another decision point. The next decision point is, well, if, if you really need all this, then you need to formulate a, a referendum, a referendum...
Question?
Referendum question to put on the, on the May primary for your taxpayers to say, okay, we need this much more money because of, and you list the reasons for your taxpayers, and they vote on it. 99 times out of 100, maybe all 100 times, no public referendum vote has been approved. I don't even know if any have taken place in this state. I'm sure there have, but...
Five.
Five. Did they all fail?
Yep.
Okay, they all failed. So, we know...
Can I ask you right there, then why are we going through this motion?
That's because you may need more than the Act One index gives you, you may want to take advantage of that little bit more that referendum exception can give you, so that you know how much less you need to cut.
To do the referendum exceptions, you have to do a proposed preliminary budget. Otherwise, you don't get to do them.
So, what are you trying to anticipate? What do you anticipate? What are you looking for in, in the approval of how much more?
I'm, I'm following the directions I was given to prepare an early Act One budget so that the school board has the flexibility, which may be, to raise more mills than allowed under the Act One index. The, the final decision is yours to make. I'm not, I'm not, you know, politic and for one way or the other. This just gives you the option. We've discussed it at length, we want to, you know, we want to give you as, as much information that we can give you, we want to be as very open as possible. You know, it's just important to note that we're not, this is not the final budget, and we're not saying, okay, we're going to raise all of these mills of taxes. We can't do that, and we're not going to do that, and you can't do that till you pass a final budget anyway. So, this is an exercise, and this gives you that extra option, if you want to take it, to go down that track, or you can just say tonight, okay, we're happy with having a draft budget, give us all the details, and we're going to opt out, and we'll get to work sharpening our pencils and making all the cuts that we need to make to get down to no more than the index, or maybe even below the index.
So, you've got two tracks, and if you take that other one, the one you just mentioned about that, ultimately, the public has to make that decision. Is that correct?
They could. You could decide at multiple...
See, I'm confused about that.
At multiple, see, this, this approach preserves the greatest number of options for the school board about what they want to do. If you don't do this, you lose those options. You could decide that you wanted to seek referendum exceptions, and if you get them, you'll use them, or if you get them, you could still decide later, you know what, we're going to make some other cuts, and we're still going to bring that down, and we're going to stay within the index. You could do that. You could also decide, ah, our referendum exceptions were granted, but we still need all of this money, we're not touching fund balance, we're, we're going to ask for the maximum and go to referendum. I doubt seriously that you will, but the option is legally still available to you. If you don't approve this process, you lose those options and are stuck with a $1.8 million hole to make up. That's in here, 1.8 million.
What I don't want to see happen is us try to get more tax money and to leave us off the hook, so to speak, on some of the things we've discussed on doing that are tough decisions. You know, in the back of my mind, well, we're not going to do that because we can't get more tax money.
What this does is lay out the, the greatest number of options and should be the worst possible scenario of the greatest amount of money that needs to be raised by taxation if you want to maintain a balanced budget and not use fund balance. At multiple points after this, you can start deciding to cut things, to pursue a public referendum, not pursue a public referendum, pursue, continue to pursue the referendum exceptions, or decide to eliminate all those, and in return, come up with more and more cuts. And even though you have been granted, even though these, keep these options open, you have essentially until March, and I can't give you the exact date, to decide, well, we're not pursuing a public referendum...
Here's our timelines here.
And they're, they're in the previous timelines that I gave you, and so, that would mean making more cuts to the budget. Or, I don't even know how much of your fund balance is left, you'd have to direct that to Mr. Marnell.
From that other report that we got, there was two offsetting opinions about the, the budget, and one was that, from the Pennsylvania Department of Education, if I've got them in the right order, said we have too much money, and the auditor said, we don't have enough, we should have two months' worth of working capital, or whatever you want to call it. If, if the department thinks that we have too much money and we're not going to use the fund balance, why would they approve anything for us? Is that an okay line of thought there, Jim? I mean, or do I have too many things screwed up?
No, you, you don't have, you don't have it screwed up. The, the department would, would look at the, the budget, especially the, 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 this budget if it got submitted, and of course, the final budget once it gets submitted, and, and if they see that you have too much money in your fund balance, which we don't...
But they said we did.
Well, that was based on the, his audit of 1617. Now, he's completing the audit of 1718, so the fund balance went down.
Okay.
Okay. So, anyway, the, the department would say, hey, you've got too much in your unreserved, undesignated fund balance, you've got a decision to make, school district, and, and one of the decisions would be, we're going to rescind your tax increase and, and make you not have a tax increase because you have too much money on your hands, or they may say you need to move that money to an assigned category or something like that. Now, we make sure that when we pass a final budget, we don't put ourselves in, in that type of situation. Don't want that to happen. We don't want to tell people there's a tax increase, tax bills get printed up, charged to us, and then the state come back and say, eh, sorry, you have to rescind that tax increase. So, we don't want that to happen, and we won't let that happen.
Where is the 1819, or 1718 audit?
He's, he's filing it, and he's doing his, his final auditing pieces of it.
Well, isn't that supposed to be submitted to the state by December 31st?
No, actually, the deadline is March 31st.
Okay, so will it be done soon?
I anticipate it will be. He's going through his final checklist of items. He asked for this week some information. He's auditing components of the National School Lunch Program, so...
Okay, well, that's fine.
Yeah.
What I know is, in 1415, this district had a $7.6 million fund balance. Okay? 7.6. When I left, it was eight. So, this school district, up till 1415, was on par, was doing quite well. But from that date, as of the audit for 17, it's down to 4.9, and now the 18 audit isn't done. I'm going by Jim's AFR, we lost another 2 million in 18. That fund balance is down to 2.9 as of June of 2018. Okay? 7.6 to 2.9. Does that tell anybody anything? The money's flowing out of this place. 4.7 million. And 1.4, that was in capital projects, which is great. That's what you have a fund balance for. But the other three and a half million, you're bleeding.
Well, there were projects committed with that fund balance from prior budgets, and I, and, and, and I can show those, and the school board approved them. There was commitments made for purchasing Chromebooks, purchasing a school van. The year before I arrived here, I think it was 1112 school year, the district spent nearly $2 million. They built that maintenance building, and they...
Jim, that was during my year. That happened in 1112 fiscal year. When I left in 1011...
You retired, you retired June of 2011.
Thank you. And the fund balance is 8 million bucks, and I rolled over just under 2 million in a capital projects fund for 1112, which I said brought the fund balance down to 6 million. I give credit, okay, from that 6 million up to 1415, it went up to 7.6 million, according to the audits. Okay? That fund balance was at 7.6 million in 1415. I know for a fact in 17 is a 4.9 because that's what the audit says, and I'm going by Jim's AFR because I don't have the audit for 18, but Jim says on the AFR, we lost another 2 million dollars. Okay? So, another two off of 4.9 is 2.9. 7.6, 2.9, okay? 4.7 million. I know 1.4 million went in the capital projects fund. In 18, we spent 943,000, then you had a couple others in a couple of previous years. Okay? 1.4 from 4.7, that's operating losses. That's massive operating losses. Just the number, 7.6 now 2.9. That puts me over the edge. Just the number, 7.6 now 2.9. That puts me over the edge. Why are we gonna approve this resolution?
I know some of that was, some of that fund balance was used to, to balance the budget ones on some of those years. We took some...
Yeah, yeah, three and a half million.
Yeah, right. Some years we didn't raise taxes. We just took that money out of the budget.
Well, you can't make up three and a half million. That number is so massive, it blows me away.
That, that was part of the budget disclosure that, that we gave each and every year. It showed the, the difference between operating revenue and operating expenses. And, you know, decisions were made in, in the reelection years, like 13, 15, 17. We're, we're not raising taxes even though we had operating deficits. We'll, we'll use fund balance. Some of the fund balance for special projects, some of the fund balance to balance a budget. There's, there's nothing that can be done about that today.
Not today, but it should've been done five years ago.
Well, no one's arguing with that.
I know you're not arguing with it because it's a fact. When I left, I knew. It was a neon sign up there already in the time I was dating in '11, that retirement was gonna kill every school district in this state. Okay? And Pisa's put out the spreadsheet of the percentage increases. And then it's, in 2011, I was paying 8.5%. It's now 34%, okay? What's that mean in dollars? That's $1.5 million increase in that amount of time. Add on your special ed that went up another 700,000. That's 2.2 million dollars of expenses that you had no control. No one in a school district has control of those expenses. So you have to meet it. You have to raise taxes every year to meet it. And if you look around at all the other districts in this county, they did it. We didn't. We're at 78 mills. We're at Mount Pleasant. They're at 91. We're 13 mills below Mount Pleasant. That's crazy. 12 mills below Yaw? Crazy. 10 mills below Dairy? Crazy. That's all. I'm done for now.
That's your bill, we know.
We about done.
Yes, we are. Do we have a motion, please?
Well, I have a question for you. Is it okay that I, I put some of these out for the public? I mean, I know we have to post it. And I'll, we'll have a couple copies here for official signatures for us. But I, I could put them out there for, I gave one to Bob, but anybody who's sitting in the public wants these. And, and we'll have Mr. Pushkar posted on our website, and...
We're hiding nothing.
Right, really not.
Think it'd be a good idea.
So I, I have them. I'll... You know what?
We're trying to be as transparent as possible through this process.
Grab one and then, you need more?
Okay, can we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Polakowski, Mr. Porter. Roll call, please.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
No.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Motion carries, 5, 1, 3 absent.
Personnel, FMLA.
The board is asked to consider the approval of an FMLA for Katie Walters with no break in service from approximately April 1st, 2019 through June 6, 2019.
Need a motion?
Make a motion.
Mr. Carson, second.
Second.
Mr. Fry? Roll call, please.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Motion carries, 6 and 3 absent.
FMLA revision?
The board will be asked to consider the revised FMLA for Cindy Gallagher with the addition of reserving seven sick days.
Do we have a motion, please? Mr. Carson, second.
Second.
Mr. Polakowski? Roll call, please.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Motion carries, 6 and 3 absent.
I went down.
Yeah, I did too. Assistant track coach, if you can find a page. Yeah, might, I can see what.
The board will be asked to consider the hiring of Mark Kiefer as assistant high school track coach for the 2018-2019 school year at a supplemental salary of $2,771.
Need a motion?
Make a motion.
Mr. Carson, second. Mr. Fry? Roll call, please.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Motion carries, 6, 3 absent.
High school baseball coach?
The board will be asked to consider the, the hiring of Al Govern as head high school baseball coach for the 2018-2019 school year at a supplemental salary of $3,980.
Motion, please. Mr. Fry, second. Mr. Carson? Roll call, please.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Motion carries, 6, 3 absent.
Citizens' comments? Seeing none?
Seeing none.
Need a motion for adjournment? Mr. Fry? Mr. Carson, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Good night and safe travels.